Good evening. I'm Harold Holzer, Director of the Roosevelt House. And on behalf of Jennifer Rabb, the President of Hunter College, I want to welcome you to the fourth of our pre-primary day Roosevelt House candidate forums, unique among all the debates and discussions around the city this season, because ours are focused on and led by our remarkable Hunter students. So, starting on June 12th, New Yorkers will be choosing candidates for citywide office like mayor and comptroller. And we have, of course, focused on those races as well. But in neighborhoods around the city and getting much less attention, voters will be making critical choices on future local representation. That is, the New York City Council. With Pride Month underway, we are reminded that voters are hopefully focusing on, among many other issues, on the issue of LGBTQ representation in city government. And that's why, one week after hosting a Pride Month forum focused on LGBTQ issues among candidates for municipal office, we return this evening with a forum featuring city council candidates, introducing us to some of those who present clear and strong voices and visions of equity and respect for all New Yorkers. You may know, we all should know, that the city council's LGBTQ caucus is at risk of eroding this November, possibly even disappearing altogether. And that's because all five current caucus members, including Council Speaker Corey Johnson, are barred by term limits from seeking reelection to another term. Now, the list could also grow this season, because more than a dozen openly LGBTQ candidates are running throughout the city. For this evening's forum, we extended invitations to any and all council candidates who have been endorsed by the LGBTQ Victory Fund, which has been called, and I want to quote here, "the only national organization dedicated to electing openly LGBTQ candidates who can further equality at all levels of government." We're pleased to have six of the candidates here with us tonight. They come from Brooklyn, Queens, and Manhattan neighborhoods remotely, of course, and we're delighted to welcome them all. They are Eric Botcher, who is Chief of Staff to Speaker Johnson, and an LGBTQ plus rights advocate, running to fill Corey's seat in Council District 3, which includes the Village, Chelsea, Hell's Kitchen, and parts of Soho and the Upper West Side. Previously, Eric served as Governor Cuomo's liaison to New York State's LGBTQ community, where he worked on passage of marriage equality in New York State. And before that, Eric served as LGBTQ and HIV/AIDS community liaison for then-city Council Speaker Christine Quinn, where he worked to develop initiatives to fight HIV/AIDS. Marty Cummings is a drag artist, activist, and television producer, running to represent Council District 7, comprising Manhattan Valley, Manhattanville, Morningside Heights, and Hamilton Heights. Marty serves on Community Board 9, serving the people of Upper Manhattan as an advisor on the New York City Nightlife Advisory Board. During the 2016 election, Marty established the Hell's Kitchen Democrats. If elected, they would be the first non-binary member of the New York City Council. We also welcome Crystal Hudson, a community organizer, running to represent Brooklyn's District 35, which includes Prospect Heights, Crown Heights, Fort Greene, Clinton Hill, and Bed-Stuy. During the pandemic, Crystal created Greater Prospect Heights Mutual Aid, designed to help meet local food needs and provide information and resources. Recently, she led an effort to provide information and resources and oppose overpolicing in her community. If elected, Crystal would be the first out queer Black woman elected to the city council. Kristin Richardson-Jordan is an author and activist, running to represent Council District 9 in Manhattan, which encompasses Central Harlem, Morningside Heights, the Upper West Side, and East Harlem. An active participant in Black Lives Matter and before that Occupy Wall Street, she's been a member of African Ancestral Lesbians United for Societal Change, the Democratic Socialists of America, and the Lenox Terrorist Tenants Association. Kristin describes herself as a strong advocate for police accountability. If elected, she would be the first out Black lesbian to represent Central Harlem in the council. Jeffrey Omora is an actor and labor leader, running in District 6, which includes Lincoln Square and parts of the Upper West Side. He helped create and lead the grassroots campaign known as Fair Wage on Stage. He was elected to the Board of Actors Equity, where he's negotiated for better wages and benefits for the union members of that group. He has also been a field organizer for Barack Obama, Hillary Clinton, Elizabeth Warren, and Joe Biden. If elected, he would be the first openly gay person elected to represent District 6 and the first Japanese-American elected to public office in New York State. Finally, we welcome Alfonso Quiroz, a community activist and LGBTQ rights advocate, running to represent Council District 25, which includes Elmhurst and Jackson Heights in Queens. More than a decade, by the way, after a campaign for the same council seat. With roots in organized labor, he previously served as a member of Community Board 3, the president of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, a Democratic district leader, and Deputy Chief of Staff for Council Member Helen Sears. During the pandemic, he's advocated for support for small businesses and for the reopening of a shuttered hospital in his district. Those are our candidates, and that's the extraordinary array of neighborhoods we have represented this evening. To lead tonight's discussion, along with the wonderful Hunter College students, who happily are clearly not on summer break, that's why they're engaged here, because they're full-time activists, and we're really grateful for their presence, we're pleased to welcome back the new director of the Hunter College LGBTQ Policy Center at Roosevelt House, Erin Mayo-Adams. In addition to moderating programs like this one, which she began doing even before she took over as head of the center, she is an Assistant Professor of Political Science in the Political Science Department at Hunter, and a member of the Roosevelt House Public Policy Faculty and Curriculum Committee. She's the author of the book Queer Alliances: How Power Shapes Political Movement Formation. And she's also written for a number of political science and legal journals on LGBTQ rights. So, as I mentioned, she's already done several programs for Roosevelt House during Pride Month, and we do hope to introduce her to all of you in person when we open our doors in the fall. In the meantime, even remotely, this evening's program could not be in better hands. And with that, it's a pleasure to turn the microphone over to my colleague Erin Mayo-Adams.
Hello, and welcome to this evening's event. All the candidates now can go ahead and open their cameras and their microphones. I'm delighted to be able to lead this event with such an extraordinary slate of candidates. So, what I will do, just to begin, is describe in super brief our format. So, I'm going to begin by allowing each candidate to have the opportunity to describe why they're running for office and their general goals for the city. After that, I'm going to ask the candidates a couple of general questions. After that, we'll move on to some specific student questions. And at the end of the event, around 5:50, we'll open it up for audience Q and A. So, if you look in the Q and A, you can ask questions as the event goes on. I also see we're waiting for one candidate to open their microphones. If the host can see if they'll issue, so that we can join Crystal Hudson. What we can do is, I'll go ahead and begin with the other candidates on the opening statement, and we'll have Crystal go last. Hopefully, Crystal will be able to have the camera open. Oh, great. So, perfect. So, we can go in the correct order. I should also say, just before we begin, very cognizant that everyone is running for office. Each candidate will be given about, will be given exactly one minute to respond to questions, and a little timer will appear when you know you have about 15 seconds left. All right. With that said, we'll go ahead and begin. So, the first question is, what made you decide to run for office? And what are your major goals for the city? And we'll begin with Eric Botcher.
Well, thank you so much, Erin. I want to thank you and the Roosevelt House for hosting this important discussion. My name's Eric Botcher. I'm running for City Council District 3, which is the west side of Manhattan, Village, Chelsea, and Hell's Kitchen. And among the issues I'm running for city council to address are the code one. Number one is the COVID-19 crisis, economic recovery from the COVID-19 crisis, not just for people who were doing well before, but a recovery for all New Yorkers. The homelessness crisis and affordable housing crisis. In the richest city and the richest country in the world, it's absolutely shameful that we have nearly 80,000 men, women, and children sleeping in shelters every night. And the mental health crisis that we have not addressed adequately here in New York City. For me, that's somewhat of a personal issue. When I was in high school, I spent a month in a mental health hospital following a serious, a series of suicide attempts. And that's treatment that saved my life and got me on the right track. But sadly, very, very few Americans and New Yorkers have access to that kind of treatment, particularly people of color, people living near or below the poverty line. It's something we need to change, and that's what I believe we will be able to do with this new city council, with so many incredible candidates running, like many, like the candidates who are here tonight. I have great hope for the future with this incredible group of folks running.
Thank you so much, Eric. Let's go ahead and move on to Marty Cummings, same question. Why did you decide to run for office, and what are your major goals for the city?
Well, first of all, thank you so much for inviting all of us to join you tonight. I decided to run for office because, like many of the people here, we recognize that the LGBTQ caucus would be term limited. And we've never had trans, non-binary, or gender queer representation in our city council. And I'm proud to be a non-binary candidate. I'm also proud to be a gig worker. As a drag artist, I've worked in our small, locally-owned businesses. I know what it's like to live paycheck to paycheck. And in a city where the cost of living continues to go up for the people who are making the least amount of money, we need representatives who know what it's like at the first of the month to not know which bill is going to get paid, you know? I've been working with organizations like the Ali Fournay Center for Homeless Queer Youth, the RDJ Refugee Shelter, and Trinity Place Shelter for years to help our unhoused and food insecure neighbors. And I want to make sure that we're taking on the housing crisis, that we're protecting our small businesses, and that we're holding police accountable, eliminating the vice squad, and making sure we're putting resources back into addiction care. I've been in recovery for 10 years, mental health care, homeless services. We have the capability of housing every single person in this city. There are no excuses. And so, those are some of the top reasons I'm running.
Thank you so much for that, Marty. Let's go ahead and move on to Crystal Hudson. Why did you decide to run for office, and what are your major goals for the city?
Yes. Thank you again for having us all here this evening. My name is Crystal Hudson. I'm running for city council in the 35th district in Brooklyn, which encompasses the neighborhoods of Crown Heights, Prospect Heights, Fort Greene, Clinton Hill, and Bed-Stuy. And I am a third-generation Brooklynite. I was a caregiver for my mother for the past eight years, who had Alzheimer's disease. And that's why I got into public service. I've seen firsthand how incredibly difficult it is for so many of us to access services and resources and programming and even basic information. And so, I'm running to make government more accessible for more of us. We know that going back to what was considered normal before didn't work for so many of us, for those of us who live on the margins, who are Black and Brown and immigrants and don't speak English as our first languages, and are queer and LGBTQ identified and trans. And, you know, so I'm running really to ensure that we don't go back to what was normal and that we have a New York City that works for all of us and not just some of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's now move on to Kristin Richardson-Jordan, same question. Why did you decide to run for office, and what are your major goals for the city?
Yes, so I'm Kristin Richardson-Jordan. I'm on a mission to disrupt District 9 with Radical Love. District 9 is Central Harlem. I'm third-generation Harlemite. And my political platform spells out Harlem as well. I got into the race not as someone who's done electoral politics in the past. In fact, I'm the candidate in this race that doesn't have any ties to the political machine. And I never saw myself as someone running for office. But as an organizer, as an activist, what happens is when you get super involved in mutual aid and wellness, and then you start protesting and you're doing all this stuff firsthand, you wind up realizing that you're plugging the holes of a really failing, really broken system, and you start to think about how to actually fundamentally change it. So, my mission of Radical Love is really about centering people and people power and doing fundamental shifts to our system of patriarchy and white supremacy and heterosexism.
Thank you so much for that, Kristin Richardson-Jordan. Now, let's go ahead and move on to Jeffrey Omora. Jeffrey Omora, what, why did you decide to run for office, and what are your major goals for the city?
Yeah, thanks for having us. I am so excited about every single one of these candidates who's on this forum tonight. So, I'm a labor organizer and an elected officer of my union. This pandemic wiped us out. Everyone I represent on the Council of Actors Equity has been unemployed for the past 16 months. And last summer, we realized help wasn't coming for us at any level of government. So, we organized the Be an Arts Hero campaign to bring the national arts community together to lobby Congress for direct arts relief. We sat down with over 60 U.S. Senate offices. We got $16 billion in arts relief in the December stimulus package. But here, on the local level, I've been lobbying the city council for arts funding, and all of our arts advocates are term limited. Both in Crystal's district, Lori Combo, and Eric's district, Corey Johnson, two of our great arts advocates will be gone. So, I'm running to make sure we've got at least one seat at the table, because that's how we get the entire city's economy back on track, bringing 65 million tourists back into the city, who contribute 40% of the city's sales tax. So, we'll finally have the revenue to cover all of our essential services. That's why I'm in this race.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. And then, let's go ahead and move on to Alfonso Quiroz. Alfonso, what made you decide to run for office, and what are your major goals for the city?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Hunter College. Really appreciate being invited tonight. My name is Alfonso Quiroz. I'm a candidate for city council here in the 25th district, which encompasses Jackson Heights and Elmhurst. And the reason why I'm running is because I love this city and I love these neighborhoods. 20 years ago, I was working for Vice President Al Gore, and I was organizing the state of Florida. And we all remember that did not turn out very well. And I had no idea what to do after that. And so, what I did is I packed all my clothes in plastic bags, threw them in the backseat of my car, and drove up to New York City on a lark. It was probably the craziest thing I could do. And the whole way here, I was calling anybody and everybody to say, "Hey, do you know anyone that has a sofa or a floor where I could spend one night?" Lo and behold, here I am 20 years later. I have a wonderful little family. I live in a great apartment in a great neighborhood, and I'm running for city council. But not everybody has those same opportunities that I've had. So, I want to be able to work so that others have those same opportunities. I was president of Hispanic Chamber of Commerce in Queens. I stand on Community Board Number 3. I started the 37th Avenue Sidewalk Cafe Coalition, and I worked for a city council member that represented this area. And so, what I'd like to do is run for, the reason why I'm running for city council is so that I could help move this community on to the next decade.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. All right. Now, let's go ahead and move on to a couple of general questions. So, the first question I have is actually about LGBTQ representation, of course, the subject of this event. So, LGBTQ people are everywhere, but there are not a majority or plurality in any district. As a result, if you are elected, many LGBTQ people who do not live in your district will look to you for representation, and you'll have two constituencies. How will you represent the two, and how will you balance this representation? What will you do to structure, to address questions from those who don't live in your district who are LGBTQ? So, we'll go ahead and begin with Marty Cummings.
That's a really great question. You know, it's interesting being a queer, non-binary candidate, because I'm sure the other candidates experience it. You get a lot of messages, especially from young people who are seeing themselves represented for possibly the first time in our city. So, while we're working on budgets and discretionary funding and legislation that will benefit our district, we're also working to make sure that we're having a healthcare system and a housing system and an education system that's equitable for everyone. And that includes our LGBTQIA+ community. Because as we know, queer people make up every single facet of humanity, every racial, economic, religious background. So, we're fighting for that. And I mentioned in my opening statements, eliminating the vice squad, which traditionally, you know, goes after trans women of color at higher rates. So, we need to make sure that we're addressing those issues, so we're protecting the most marginalized within our marginalized community. And that's something that I'm committed to. And so, while working for our district, we'll be adamantly working for every single member of our queer community.
Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and move on to Crystal Hudson. Crystal, how will you serve the two constituencies?
I think it's important for us to represent, you know, everybody. I always say, I'm running to represent everyone, not some people, or these people, or those people, or people who look like me, or who hold my same, you know, values and opinions and beliefs. We're here to represent everybody. And even as a single council member, we're representing and making decisions on behalf of all New Yorkers. And so, it's important for us to, you know, keep that in mind. And, you know, again, to always, for me at least, the priority is to always center those who are most marginalized and to prioritize those with the greatest needs. And so, that's what, that's what I'm all about, and that's my plan to represent everybody.
Great. Thank you so much. And let's move on to Kristin Richardson-Jordan. How will you represent the two constituencies?
Thank you for the, thank you for the question. It's an interesting one, and I just appreciate it in a general basis. I think one of the profound, unique things about my candidacy is the centering of people power and the access to government and the idea of being truly democratic. So, because I'm trying to center people in our decision-making and in political practice in general, I think I will have a fairly easy time representing both constituencies. The current Harlem platform was informed in open forums, just open weekly policy forums. And vast majority of people in those forums were in district, but some were not. And I plan to continue those spaces as a place for policymaking that's grassroots and from the ground up, and also to continue having my weekly office hours, where I'm just open and available to anyone from any community. So, those are the concrete ways I plan to represent all constituencies.
Thank you so much, Kristin. Let's go ahead and move on to Jeffrey Omora. How will you represent the two constituencies?
It's a really interesting question, because I'm not only the only LGBT candidate in my race, I'm also the only candidate of color, the only Asian American, the only arts worker, the only labor leader. So, I'm bringing many different constituencies to this race. And, you know, I intend, when I win, to chair the Cultural Affairs Committee. So, I'll be spending a lot of time on arts issues. But, you know, to go back to the idea of representation, representation matters, because we are the ones who will be waking up each morning thinking about policies that affect the lives of LGBT New Yorkers. If you're not LGBT, you don't, you just don't. You just don't wake up thinking about that. And as a labor leader, I know that the best way to get results is when your members are behind you. So, when it comes to LGBT policy, we have to make sure that we are going directly to the community-based organizations that are on the ground working on these issues, because they are the experts. Bring them into the conversation, so that they're helping us form policy. That's how we're going to be successful.
Thank you so much. Right. And then, finally, we'll move on, oh, we have two more, I'm sorry. We'll move on to Alfonso Quiroz.
It really is a good question. But, you know, everyone is going to benefit from a council member that's going to be, you know, really addressing a lot of their issues. I mean, we want a community that's going to have great access to healthcare, that's safe, where you have a good education for your children. But it is true that representation matters, especially in the queer community. I'm going to be representing Jackson Heights and Elmhurst, and it has the largest LGBTQ Latinx community in New York. And I'm the only out-gay Latino running. It wasn't very long ago where there were actually two men who were close to my age that were murdered a couple blocks from where I live. And those cases were almost swept under the rug until the community came together and really forced the officials to pay attention to it. And that ultimately, that ultimately created the Queens Pride Parade. So, it is important that we have representation, and I'm really, really proud of this district. And I'm going to be really, really, I'm proud to run, and I can't wait to serve in the city council.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for that response. And then, finally, we'll move on to Eric Botcher. How will you serve the two constituencies?
A great question. As Dr. Holzer mentioned during his introduction, my entrance in politics was as the LGBTQ and HIV/AIDS liaison at the city council back in 2009. I think Alfonso and others remember that. At the time, there were two openly LGBT members. It was Christine Quinn and Rosie Mendez. And then Jimmy and Danny were elected. And the city council's LGBTQ caucus has always been very, very active and instrumental in advocating for the community as a whole, citywide. But at the same time, within each member's district, every member has LGBTQIA+ residents in their district, all districts. So, while we also, while we advocate for the community as a whole, we're also advocating for our own constituents.
Thank you so, so much for that response. I'm now going to move on to one more general question, then we'll move on to student questions. I'll begin with Crystal Hudson, because Crystal needs to leave us for another event at 5:30. All right. So, this next question is actually just about your district specifically. So, all candidates discover things about their district that they didn't know about their districts in the course of campaigning. What's the biggest thing that you've learned about your district in the course of your campaign? And Crystal, you can also say a closing statement. So, we'll let you go a little bit beyond a minute, if you would like, just because you're about to jump off.
Okay. I actually, because of the rain, I have a little extra time. So, I'll stay on for like 15 more minutes.
Okay.
That's a little bit. But I think the biggest thing that I've learned in my district is really around like food insecurity. It was mentioned in the opening that I started a mutual aid organization at the start of the pandemic, and that was really because I was concerned about my neighbors. And I wanted to make sure that everybody had access to real-time information and resources, and food in particular, as people, you know, we saw people become unemployed. You know, we knew that folks were staying home when they were ill. And so, you know, food security wasn't something that was talked about a lot. I mean, it was, you know, it was mentioned here and there, but it wasn't like the center of a lot of conversations. And I found that through that work, you know, so many of the folks that were still serving over a year later with groceries on a weekly basis, which is something that I'm really proud of, are undocumented folks, are, you know, members of the LGBTQ community, are Black folks, you know, so diverse, but really people who have not received relief and aid from the government for a variety of reasons. And so, you know, I think because so many people have been involved in mutual aid operations, you know, even if you were just a volunteer, our network has over 600 neighbors. And so, people generally have been exposed to food insecurity, and they're really concerned, and they want to ensure that people will have access to good, quality, healthy, and affordable foods moving forward. And knowing also that government can and should play a role in, you know, providing access to those foods. And so, I find that that's a topic. And so I find that that's a topic that, you know, prior to the pandemic, was almost never mentioned and now comes up quite a bit.
Thank you so much for bringing that up, Crystal. We actually talked about mutual aid networks in some of my classes. So it's exciting to see you mention that. All right, let's go ahead and move on to Kristen Richardson-Jordan. So Kristen, how, what is something you learned about your district in the course of campaigning?
Well, I I always knew, I always knew that Harlem was just a beautiful center of just, you know, art, creative energy, Black history and culture. And, you know, you think of Harlem, you think of Harlem Renaissance, you you already think of that of that legacy. But I I really have come to just see more and more and value the immense creativity that is in my neighborhood and in my community. There are just artists around every corner. It's a really beautiful thing. I'm a candidate, but I'm also a creative. I've written two of my own poetry books and and I've performed at local spaces. And one of the things that I wanted to do with the campaign is get really creative about our outreach. So we've had some very great grassroots actions around different designs of posters, different designs of leaflets, people doing things on their own chalk art on the sidewalks. And it's just been beautiful to see and to and to grow and reaffirm that that just creative, beautiful creative energy that's in the district.
Thank you so much for that, Kristen. It sounds like a very vibrant, exciting district. All right, let's move on to Jeffrey O'Murrett. What's something you learned about your district during the course of campaigning?
Yeah, I don't even know where to start, because I feel like I've been through grad school in the last seven months. I've learned so much. You know, helicopters are a huge issue, bicycle safety is a huge issue. But I think the number one thing is that this community is in desperate need of healing after the last year. We've all been through an enormous amount of trauma. And, you know, I'll be honest, I'm wondering if the other candidates have experienced this. I get yelled at on the streets by residents, as we're out canvassing. I get yelled at every single day from people who are, you know, yelling at me from the right or people who are yelling at me from the left. People tensions are very high right now. And the closing argument of my campaign is that, as an organizer, I am the one who can help bring this community together so that we can all heal. I've learned that not everybody is ready to heal yet, but I still think it's a worthy goal. And that's that's my focus as we move forward.
Fantastic, thank you so much, Jeffrey. All right, let's move on to Alfonso Cados.
One of the things that I had learned about my neighborhood in this district that I didn't know before was a house in Elmhurst. It was owned by a woman by the name of Valentina Yata. And during World War II, she fought for the Polish Resistance and uncovered what the Nazis were doing at the Warsaw Ghetto. And believe it or not, she just died last year. And I got a chance to meet her at the age of 107. And what we're doing is we're trying to landmark her home so that we can save it for future generations. All too often, in this neighborhood, you've got developers coming in and knocking down these wonderful old homes to build huge buildings that are out of place in this district. Now, it's not a house that was, you know, that was built by a famous architect. But sometimes historic buildings can have importance because of the cultural factor that they present. And I think that was one of the things that I learned is this wonderful house and the history of the neighborhood, Elmhurst, which is just as old as parts of Lower Manhattan and Flushing, and goes back to the Revolutionary War. So it's really important that we find those those little areas that really can tell a story about our history that we never knew before and that we can carry those stories on to people in the future.
Thank you so much for that. And what a beautiful story that's a testament to the history of your district. All right, let's go ahead and move on to Eric Botcher. What's something that you learned about your district in the course of campaigning?
I had to think about this one a little bit, because as the chief of staff in the current council member's district office for the last six years, I I joke that you could blindfold me and drop me on any block in the district. And I could tell you which agent, which city agencies were being problematic, who the people were on that district, et cetera. But I have met a lot of new people that I hadn't met before. And people who are very active politically. You know, I'd always worked with people who are active in block associations, community boards, tenant associations. But during the campaign, there's a lot of people who, a lot of those folks haven't necessarily been very active. And then there's a lot of folks who haven't been active in those other capacities that have been just incredibly active in the campaign. And it's really been a great thing, seeing all these people coming together from around the district to get involved in the election, and everyone's really excited about New York's next chapter.
Thank you so much. It sounds like you've built a wonderful grassroots campaign. Let's go ahead and move on to Marty Cummings. Marty, what is something you learned about your district during the course of campaigning?
Well, I I knew the people in this district were amazing before, but I really learned with the pandemic just how amazing they were. They're kind of echoing what some of my friends and colleagues have said through, you know, with sanitation doing doing cuts to their budget. We saw trash piling up when people are outside using our park spaces more. So we did community cleanups and neighbor, it was a way for neighbors to gather and socialize in a safe way while cleaning up the community. And we worked with our small businesses, so we could do, each cleanup would be at a different small business, so we could promote that business. And we had so many people come out to do these cleanups. And then, like, you know, Crystal, neighbors of mine and I got together to help, because there's a two parks right near my apartment where unhoused neighbors gather. And and so we started packing sandwiches. And now we have over 100 volunteers who hit the streets every Wednesday to help our unhoused and food insecure neighbors. And I've now been able to offer a vaccine van for our unhoused neighbors in this area. And it just showed how, you know, community really shows up to help. And I think this year, as traumatic, like Jeffrey said, as traumatic as this year was, I think it really brought people together in a way to say, hey, this may be a huge city with 9 million people, but we are a community. Let's work together to help each other. And it was really awesome to see that camaraderie and fellowship through this traumatic time.
Thank you so much for that response. It's really heartening to hear that community that you were able to build around your campaign. But now we're going to move on to a couple of specific issue questions. And to lead us in those, I have two students with me, two excellent, outstanding students from some of my classes. The first student is Ariana Ahmed. So Ariana, are you ready to ask your question?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming today. And well, my question, it might be a little Queens-specific when I get into it, but I just wanted to say I am from Queens. So I've kind of noticed that Queens has been a very LGBTQ-friendly environment for the five years that I've lived here. But I also wanted to address that I graduated high school only two years ago, and there were no active school-wide initiatives to address LGBTQ issues, history, or Pride Month, for that matter. My question is, and it's open to everyone, is how do you plan to make LGBTQ youth feel more supported at DOE schools, especially in your district?
Thank you, Ariana. We'll begin with Kristen Richardson-Jordan.
So that's a great question. So thank you for posing it. I think there's, so there's a couple of things. The first is that I really want to have enrichment for all of the youth in my district, but particularly taking care of those who are LGBTQ. We need to have, we need to have internships. Particularly, I want to look at doing paid internships that allow the youth to have some extra means. We have a large number of LGBTQ homeless youth and those who are financially struggling and also those who just don't have outlets. So making sure we're investing in creative arts programs in our after-school is another piece of the puzzle. I also have a proposal to enhance the curriculum in this district. This is more Harlem-specific. I know you said you're in Queens, but we have a very rich LGBTQ history in Harlem that is mostly overlooked. And like much of our history as queer people and particularly queer people of color, it gets erased. And then our youth don't get to know who they are. So one profound thing I want to do is make sure that we're including that in the curriculums and in after-school programming and and resources for the youth.
Thank you so much for that response. And let's go ahead and move on to Jeffrey. How do you plan to make LGBTQ youth feel more supported at DOE schools?
Yeah, I'm actually sad to hear that, that was your experience. I imagine it's a little different school to school. We have some schools in in this neighborhood with enormous resources and some that are very under-resourced. So I want to make sure that now that we've legalized marijuana and 40% of that sales tax is supposed to go towards schools, I want to make sure it's going towards our under-resourced schools for for programming like that specifically tailored to our LGBT students. You know, the city council has very little control over the school system right now. I would like to have a little more control. I think our representatives should have more say, especially in things like curriculum. If we're able to get that, then I think it's really important to be teaching LGBT history. You know, after all the hate crimes that we've been experiencing, the anti-Asian violence, antisemitic violence, education is really the best way forward. You know, it's hard to, it's hard to hate someone when you realize that their history is very much part of your history.
Thank you so much for that response to Alfonso Cados. Alfonso, how would you help LGBTQ youth to be more supported at DOE schools?
Well, I, number one, I know that you said that you lived in Queens. By any chance, if you live in Jackson Heights or Elmhurst, I would love to have your vote on June 22nd. Let me say that to start off with. I'm also sorry that you felt that way. I mean, I know that the experience that I've had in the local schools, they are very gay, you know, LGBT. But I think just this is really where representation matters. Because as the only openly LGBTQ Latinx candidate, I, of course, would be going and meeting with students and discussing with them, you know, different things. And of course, when you are an openly gay person, that's going to be part of your narrative. And that's one of the things I'm going to be discussing with the students and working with principals to make sure that there is LGBTQ history and that people understand their local representative and where he comes from and what his life is like.
Thank you so much for that response. And let's move on to Eric Botcher, same question.
The issue that you outlined has been an issue for a very long time. 12 years ago, when I was at the council as the LGBT liaison, we worked with LGBT Caucus and NYCLU, Asian Americans for Equality, Sikh Coalition, and many other groups to pressure the Department of Education to implement Chancellor's Regulations to prevent bias-based harassment. And they were on the books, they weren't being enforced by the Department of Education. And some schools were doing a great job on the issue, and other schools were not. And what it came down to and what it comes down to today is the fact that school principals and administrators have a lot of leeway over what they do and don't do in the school, which is great. But the DOE has to ensure that certain things take place in every school. And that's what the next mayor and the next chancellor and the next LGBT caucus need to work on.
Thank you so much for that response. All right, and let's go ahead and move on to Marty Cummings. How would you make LGBTQ youth feel supported at DOE schools?
Well, it's a lot like, you know, everyone else said, we need to make sure that we're having the chancellor and the administrators be held accountable to following through with the regulations that are in place and making sure that funding is distributed equitably to every school. So they're given the resources and the support that they need. Because as we know, like for in my districts, for example, there's three school districts, one of which on the Upper West Side gets a lot of resources, and then the northern part, not so much. So we need to make sure that we're distributing resources equitably, so every student is given the support they need. And I also want to make sure that we're putting community health centers in our schools with mental health care providers and social workers to get students the support that they need. And if family members need that help as well, they're able to access that care. So we can support the whole family, especially if a young person is going through, you know, it's hard being a kid as it is. And then you add being a queer kid in school and dealing with that, you know? Having those resources is crucial. And also working with our city and state legislators to make sure our curriculum not only teaches LGBTQIA+ history, but we're teaching Black history and Indigenous history and women's history and immigrant history, and really giving our students the full scope of what the actual history of our city and country is, not just a one-sided view of it, which is currently what's happening.
Thank you so much for that response. Let's go ahead and move to Crystal Hudson. Crystal, how would you make LGBTQ youth feel more supported at DOE schools?
I think in addition to what, you know, everyone else has said, like making sure we have access to LGBTQ curriculum in all of our schools and social workers in our schools and mental health providers, and making sure that we have training for our school administrators and teachers so that they know how to handle situations. I'm sure most folks probably recall the incident a few years ago in the Bronx, at a school in the Bronx, where after, you know, a student had been bullied, they brought a weapon to school. And then, you know, one, one kid was killed and another one went to jail. And, you know, there were so many failures along the way. I think if we, if we had more resources and knew how to talk about LGBTQ issues, then we would have students who feel safer and who feel, you know, welcomed and feel like the spaces in schools are really for them. But I think beyond that, you know, we talked earlier about the two constituencies, right? I think as the LGBTQ caucus, it would be incumbent upon us to make sure we're bringing in all the other council members who may not identify as LGBTQ and making sure that they're also champions and advocates and talking to the schools in their district and ensuring that they're pushing just as hard as we are for, you know, culturally relevant curriculum. And with that, I do want to say I do have to jump off now. But thank you for having me here. I'll just wrap really quickly by saying I'm the only candidate in my race who has any experience in city government, which I think is really important as we look to recover from the pandemic, the economy, the racial reckoning, and everything we've all experienced in the past past year. I'm proud to be running a campaign that's rooted in love and honesty, integrity, care and respect for other people. And Kristen and I would both be the first gay Black woman of, I guess it would be the first two Black gay women or the first gay Black woman, however you want to say it, ever elected in New York City. But I think, you know, I'm proud to be running a historic campaign, as I'm sure Kristen is too. And with your support, you know, we can have the representation that we all deserve. So thank you again for having me here this evening, and and thanks for your time.
Hey, Crystal, I just wanted to say my policy director lives in your district, and you are his top choice.
Awesome, glad to hear it. And I'll be in touch about the community calls.
Thank you so much for joining us, Crystal. It's been a pleasure to have the opportunity to speak with you.
Thanks, Erin, I appreciate it.
Good luck campaigning.
Thank you, take care.
Take care. All right, so now we're going to move on to a question from Vanessa Fuentes, who's another student at Hunter College. And then Marty also has to leave at about 5:50, so I'll have Marty answer the question first. Does that sound good? All right, so go ahead, Vanessa.
Thank you so much, everybody, for coming. I'm a Hunter student. And the question I want to ask is, in recent years, many transgender women have been attacked or killed on the streets. Although the US is experiencing a national reckoning with respect to race relations and public safety, it is clear that the safety and well-being of trans people has taken a backseat while simultaneously becoming a flashpoint in our current political discourse, i.e. transgender rights threatens women's corpse. What, if anything, would you do to ensure that your district is safe for the trans and for the larger LGBTQ community?
Thanks so much, Vanessa. That's such an important question. You know, it feels like every week we hear of someone being murdered across our country for being a trans woman and a trans woman of color. It's an epidemic, and it's happening in our own cities. So we need our legislators to make sure, like I mentioned, like, you know, we we need to make sure that that we are really fighting for sex workers' rights, for trans rights, eliminating vice squad, like I mentioned, which I think can be extremely harmful to our trans community, and making sure that we're putting resources within our our schools, in our healthcare system, in our housing system, that are going to protect our trans community and making sure that when we're putting resources towards harm reductionists and violence interrupters in our community, that they're trained to protect and support our trans community. That what is the statistic that it's like, like, trans women of colors, life expectancy is like 30? That what is the statistic that it's like, like, trans women of colors, life expectancy is like 35 or 36 years old? That's bullshit, like, excuse me, but that's like bullshit, but that's a statistic that we have, you know? So it is incumbent of our city government to do everything in our power to put resources, funding, education, to make sure we're protecting this community. Because at the end of the day, you know, the reason we have queer liberation and pride marches and all of that is because trans women of color stood up and spoke out and led the way. So now it's our job to stand up for them. And with that, I do have to go. I have another forum at 6:00. I'm so sorry.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vanessa, and thank you. Good to see everyone. Good luck on the campaigns. Drink lots of water. Try to sleep when you can and carry granola bars with you. It's going to be a long couple of weeks. But thank you, Erin. Thank you, everyone, and be well.
Thank you so much for joining us and good luck on the campaign. All right, let's go ahead and move on to Jeffrey Amora. Amora, so same question. What would you do to ensure that the trans community and the larger LGBTQ community is safe?
Yeah, let me, let me just say upfront, I wish I had a better answer for this. But I think we have to approach it from a public health perspective, that it is, that the lives of trans women, especially trans women of color, are in danger. What kind of public health policies can we set to protect them? I think it starts with education and with representation and by celebrating our trans community. You know, as an actor, I know, and when I was first starting out, nobody wanted to hire anyone who looked like me. That's where, that's where, you know, the film and DVD theater world was 15 years ago. It's much different now. We have got to celebrate trans people throughout this city, literally through representation, through, you know, any, anytime there's any kind of, of, of photos representing New Yorkers, trans people have got to be included.
Thank you so much for that response. Let's go ahead and move on to Alfonso Carras.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, Jackson Heights and Elmhurst has a very, very large trans community, especially Latinx, Latinx trans community. It is very, very important that we work to decriminalize sex work and also fight for trans rights. But one of the other things that is really happening to the, our trans community here in Jackson Heights is that there really is a lack of gender-affirming healthcare. There is no reason why somebody that, a trans person that's living here needs to go to Manhattan for, you know, proper healthcare. And that's one of the things that I really want to be able to focus on once I'm in the city council, is to make sure that a trans person can stay right here in their community and speak to doctors about their issues and in the languages that they speak. That is extremely important.
Thank you so much for that response. Let's go ahead and move on to Christian Richardson. I'm sorry, Eric Botcher is next. Sorry, go ahead, Eric Botcher.
The current LGBTQ Caucus instituted quite a bit of new funding for trans organizations and they actually created a whole initiative for it. But it's just, it's just a drop in the bucket of what is needed to meaningfully implement this program. So we have to ensure that with the next city council, when we have a speaker who is possibly not LGBTQ, when we have a finance chair who's no longer LGBTQ, that those programs get kept, those initiatives get maintained and expanded. But beyond those, we really have to make sure that all the other services being offered in our city are trans, are friendly to trans and gender non-conforming New Yorkers. And we have to use the New York City Department of the Human Rights Commission to go after discrimination, not just responding to reports of discrimination at city agencies and service providers, but sending in testers and investigator, investigators and making an example out of people who discriminate to make it clear that that won't be tolerated anywhere in our city.
Thank you so much for that response and also for the Human Rights Commission. It's a very unique and exciting commission that we have in New York City. All right, let's go ahead and move on to Christian Richardson-Jordan, same question. How would you make sure that trans and LGBTQ people are safe?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. The first place my mind went to is that trans women are women. So when we're talking about women's liberation, we need to be including, if not centering, trans women and particularly those who are of color. I think when we're talking about safety and we go to trans women of color, we get to highlight what is something that's a center point in my campaign, which is the need to move towards abolition. Because we get to highlight the fact that there is violence on an interpersonal level coming from those in the community who are acting out violence and hate and also violence on a systemic level coming from the state violence of the police in our criminalization and, and in the attacks of, of trans women and women of color. So what I'm advocating for is policies that help us keep us safe. We've been organizing around that for several years in my district. I've let up a women's group for those who are women and gender non-conforming. And we have a whole host of policies around creating safe spaces, investing in community care, mental and emotional de-escalation and restorative justice models. And all we need is funding to make it happen. And that's part of what I've come to city council to get.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for that response. Now with the couple of minutes we have remaining, I'd like to open up the floor to audience Q and A. And I think Mac Barrett is going to let us know if we've collected any audience questions.
Yes, thanks, everybody. There are some great questions in the Q and A. I've selected just a couple to suit the time remaining. And I'll read them to you now. Andrew J. Humm asks, and he says that he doesn't see this as purely an LGBTQ question, but he wants to know, as a rent stabilized tenant, if the vacancy rate hits 5% or the Supreme Court declares the rent protection law is unconstitutional, what is your plan to protect tenants from the chaos that will ensue?
We'll begin with Alfonso Carras.
I think the, you know, there is a housing crisis in this city and it is extremely important that we address it. And it's probably going to be one of the biggest issues that we are going to address as soon as we get into the city council. It's, it's important that we look at basement units and other units within a house that were not, not previously suitable, or not suitable, but that were not used as apartment or living spaces. And we try to, you know, make them areas where the people can live. So what we need to be able to do is try to look at some of those spaces that were not in the past places where people would live and that we need to move forward. Because it is important that we try to increase our housing stock because there really is affordable, affordability housing crisis in this city and we really need to address that.
Thank you so much for that response. I know that's been incredibly exacerbated right now as well. Let's go and move on to Eric Botcher.
Thanks. What Andy was referring to is the fact that when our rent laws were originally instituted back in the 70s, there was a, a trigger was put in place. So if the vacancy rate exceeds 5% of the law's lapse, and that has not happened and there wasn't much fear about that happening, now there is. And we don't know exactly what will happen if the law lapses. But what the law would do, it would require the city council to pass legislation rolling back the rent laws, which obviously the city council would not do. The real estate industry would probably sue. If laws were passed to try to reinstitute the law, the rent laws, there would be more lawsuits. But housing advocates have some strategies. We have to dig into those strategies. It probably won't happen. The rental market is heating up again, but we have to be prepared.
Thank you so much for that response and for going into some of the history of that as well. Let's go ahead and move on to Christian, Christian Richardson-Jordan.
Yeah, so I agree with what's been said. I think that what we would have to do as city council members is stand with the tenants. And I've been an organizer with tenants in districts who have been fighting on, on a variety of things, fighting to cancel rent, fighting to have rent forgiveness and fighting for those who are, are members of the 22 NICA buildings we have in district, fighting against RAD and the privatization of, of NICA. So we have, we are attacked not just in this way, but on all fronts in terms of people who are renters and being able to stay in their homes. So I appreciate the question. I think what we have here in front of us is an excellent slate of people. And if we continue to build that power and we can really, we could really turn the tide with this next city council to, to not only stop that from happening, but let's take some drastic steps towards a homes guarantee and towards universal rent stabilization, towards some real solutions of, of permanently addressing the housing crisis.
Thank you so much for that response. And then finally, we'll move on to Jeffrey Amora.
Yeah, we're going to have to adjust the law if that happens because we've got to prioritize keeping people in their homes. If the Supreme Court steps in, then I don't, I don't know what we do. But we've got to bring down the cost of housing for everyone. I'm proposing a massive expansion of affordable housing throughout New York City. Alfonso already mentioned the basement conversion program. That is an amazing program that could bring more than 200,000 new units online. We can take vacant commercial office space in Midtown, the financial district, rezone that, let developers turn that into residential space. We can take the more than 1,000 parcels of vacant land that the city owns, work with nonprofit developers to build more than 50,000 units. So my focus will be on bringing down the cost of housing for everyone. And so if we were to lose our rent stabilized and rent-controlled units, there would at least be alternatives.
Thank you so much. And Mac, I think you said you had one more question?
Yes, um, let's go to Jeff Simmons, who touches on a subject that has come up throughout the evening, that is LGBTQ youth. Jeff asks, if elected, what one thing will you each, will each of you do to improve the lives of LGBTQ youth in New York City?
Begin with Eric Botcher.
What's one thing to do to improve the lives of LGBTQ youth? Think with response, with respect to LGBTQ youth, the issues that affect all young people, affect LGBTQ youth, are underfunded schools, are underfunded after-school programs, so many other issues. So every issue is an LGBTQ issue. So we have to meaningfully invest in all areas that affect the lives of young people. But like I said earlier, we have to ensure that all the programs that are offered to young people are LGBTQIA+ friendly. And that is not the case. And that's something we have to, this next city council needs to work towards.
Thank you so much for that response. Next, move to Christian Richardson-Jordan.
So as I, as I mentioned earlier, Harlem has a very rich history and heritage and culture. And there is LGBTQ heritage as well. And a lot of our youth don't get to see that or learn about that. And then that does, that does a ton of damage because we don't get to know our value and who we are as those who are queer and particularly queer and Black or queer and Latinx. So one of the things I would do is use some of my discretionary funds and Casa grant funding to support an organization that I have seen do amazing work, African Incestral Lesbians United for Societal Change. And I myself have been a member. And that is a group of intergenerational lesbians. So there are youth among them, there are seniors among them. But there is this beautiful legacy and this issue, and this initiative to pass on heritage and history and culture. And it's being done by organizers right now. As an organizer who is not experienced in politics, but is an experienced organizer, I am looking at those who are doing a lot with a little and saying, wow, imagine what they could do if we gave them something because they're doing it for nothing. So that's one particular tangible program I would help implement in the district.
Thank you so much for that response. Let's move to Jeffrey Amora.
So it's been a while since, since I was in school. But I imagine that bullying is still an issue, especially cyberbullying now. I want to make sure that we fund our Title IX coordinators who are responsible for, within the Department of Education, to, to monitor and respond to bullying issues. So that's one thing we can do. More broadly, I think we need, our LGBT health systems need more attention. We have the means to eliminate HIV. In 2019, we still had 17, or sorry, yeah, 1,700 new HIV transmissions in New York City alone. We have, we have PrEP. We can, we can get PrEP everywhere. We have the means to do it. Right now, there's only one clinic in Chelsea that has same, that provides same-day STI screening and test results. I want to expand that citywide. We have the means to eliminate as all STIs in the city. But we need the city council members who are interested in funding those programs.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for that response. And then finally, we'll move to Alfonso Carras, then we'll do closing statements.
Thank you. I think the, the two things that I would do is, number one, in schools, make sure that LGBTQ, LGBTQ history is being taught to students. And then the other would be to make sure that we are retraining counselors in schools so that they are trained to appropriately handle LGBTQ youth. And full disclosure, I think if it's the same Jeff Simmons that I know, it's my husband in our office over here writing that question.
That's, that's wonderful. Tell him thank you for the excellent question.
I didn't tell him directly, so.
All right, so this brings us to the end of the event. Thank you, everyone who's been here. Just to close out and then I'll, I'll do just a final thank you. I'd like to give each candidate the opportunity to give a 30-second just closing statement. So we'll begin with Christian Richardson-Jordan.
So I'll just go through my Harlem platform because I didn't get to highlight all of it before. But I'm holding, I'm Christian Richardson-Jordan, running for District Nine. My platform spells out Harlem. It's about holding police accountable. You know, enough barbecues, the block party is cute, but we need actual accountability for the police with real power. A is actually affordable housing, redistribute the resources to the community, a living longer care package for Harlem seniors, education, environment, and meaningful change. If you live in Harlem, please rank me number one. That's Christian Richardson-Jordan at the top of your ballot.
Thank you so much. What a great way to, I suppose, introduce everyone to your campaign platform. Let's go ahead and move on to Jeffrey Amora.
Thanks for having this. This is so much fun to be on a forum with other LGBTQ candidates. I'm used to, I'm used to the same five candidates in my race. We need help, all of us, all of these candidates that you're seeing here tonight need help. We are 14 days away from the election and early voting starts on Saturday. Get involved, no matter where you live. Find a candidate, a candidate that you like and get involved. If, if you like what I had to say, if you want to help build a more equitable arts economy for this city, please reach out, go to jeffreyamora.com/volunteer and get involved. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And let's go ahead and move to Alfonso Carras.
Thank you again for hosting this important forum. 100 years from now, historians are going to look back at this year and they're going to see a city that reimagined itself and rebuilt itself. And the people that they're going to look at is us. It's the people who are on this call. It is the Hunter students who are watching right now. Now is our time to get involved and now is our time to make a difference. I think that I'm the best candidate to serve this district, Jackson Heights and Elmhurst, because I have the authenticity, compassion, and experience that it takes to lead us on to the next decade. You can find out more about me at alfonsonyc.com and please help us get involved in our campaign and let's move forward.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Then finally, Eric Botcher.
Well, thank you very much for having this. A couple of years ago, when activists started raising the alarm bells about all the LGBTQ city council members leaving, there was only a couple candidates discussed. And now we have a really, really great slate around the city. So I'm really optimistic. So I'm really optimistic that we'll have a really, really fantastic LGBTQ caucus. To learn more about my campaign, go to ericbotcher.com and we'd love to involve you in the last couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you so much to all the candidates for participating in this event. I know it's right at the heat of the campaign season, so you're all incredibly busy right now and running in thunderstorms, I'm sure, to get out the vote in your respective districts. I also want to take the time to thank Harold Holzer, the Director of the Public Policy Institute at the Roosevelt House for introducing the event and giving us a space for this, this event. And to thank Mac Barrett and Magdalena Mizurek Novo for taking the time to help put this event together and putting together emails to the candidates, really making this run smoothly. And then I'd also like to thank the students who put together the questions for the event and all the members who took the time to be with us on Tuesday afternoon, Tuesday afternoon in June. It's been wonderful to host these events for Pride Month and I look forward to hosting future events like this, especially as we head in person. I can't wait to see everyone in person and finally be off of Zoom. Good luck to you all as you campaign. And please, everyone, be sure to vote. Early voting starts on June 12th. So please be sure to vote. All right. Thank you all and good luck.